Could we begin? Good evening. I call this June 28th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On June 30th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. As you can see, council members Rabadi and Scroggins-Johnson will not be in attendance for tonight's meeting, and council member Rao is expected to arrive shortly. Sergeant Penland has been a law enforcement officer for 21 years and is currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. Thank you for being our sergeant in arms this evening, sir. Amidication tonight will be delivered by council member Fender.
Thank you. I am borrowing a prayer from Sister Joan Chitchinster. Great God, Spirit of the universe, give us the strength it takes to listen rather than to judge, to trust rather than to fear, to try again and again to make peace even when peace eludes us. We ask, O God, for the grace to be our best selves. We ask for the vision to be builders of the human community rather than its destroyers. We ask for the humility as a people to understand the fears and the hopes of all people. We ask for the love it takes to bequeath to the children of the world to come more than the failures of our own making. We ask for the heart it takes to care for all people as well as ourselves. Give us the depth of soul, O God, to constrain our might, to resist the temptations of power, to refuse to attack the attackable, to understand that vengeance begets violence, and to bring peace, not war, wherever we go. And so we may be merciful, impatient, and gracious, and trusting with these others whom you also love. This we ask for ever and ever. Amen.
Amen. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone want to share anything at this time? Okay. Seeing none, staff has requested that we add an additional presentation, which would be 8B, as in boy, for an event update from staff. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that addition.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That carries unanimously, four zero. And there are 12 items on this evening's consent agenda. Stormwater Code of Ordinance Amendments, a resolution and capital project ordinance amendment authorizing the Airport Boulevard Sidewalk Construction Contract, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Fuji Film Diosynth Biotechnologies, a capital project ordinance amendment land acquisition fund, a resolution for the purchase of real property at 123 Scroggins Avenue, Scoggins Avenue, adoption of master sustainability plan, and appointed public bodies administrative policy update, and advisory committee appointment and approval of the May meeting minutes. Would anyone like to pull any of those items for discussion before adopting that agenda? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries four zero as well. We are now at item eight presentations. We have two presentations tonight, an overview of the draft 2024-2033 State Transportation Improvement Program. Danielle Kittredge, Senior Planner, will make the presentation, please.
Zoom in just a tad here. Okay. Yeah, Danielle Kittredge, Senior Planner. So I am going to be giving a presentation of the draft NCDOT 2024 to 2030 State Transportation Improvement Program. I am looking to give a little bit of background about the STIP development this time around, as well as how the draft STIP affects Morrisville, and then kind of the approval process that it goes through. Just as a reminder, the STIP, it does identify construction funding and schedule of projects over a 10-year time period. Generally, the first four to five years are fiscally constrained, so based on funding that's available. The out-years are considered unfunded, but based on consistent current funding levels in mind. So NCDOT is required to adopt a new STIP every four years based on federal regulations. The last STIP was approved in 2020 to 2029, and this is the current STIP that NCDOT operates under. In the past, NCDOT has updated the STIP on a two-year cycle, and this time around, it's being updated on a four-year cycle. This current STIP is, or the draft STIP, the cycle began in fall of 2019. There has been a lot of rise in construction cost, and so it has created a little bit of conflict with adding new projects in and being able to meet those demands. So in August of 2021, the prioritization cycle was halted, and it was decided that the 2024 to 2033 STIP would be developed only using existing projects. So the draft STIP was provided to MPOs on August, I mean April 25th. NCDOT did hold a webinar on May 17th to go over this draft STIP, and during the month of June, Campo did go over the draft STIP with its various boards and committees. So the draft STIP can kind of be broken out into two different steps. The first step, which I'm providing here, is looking at projects that have right-of-way or construction funding within the first five years of the current STIP. These ones are funded first. And then in step two, projects that were beyond the first five years are looked at based on their highest priority score, as well as a seniority approach to previous prioritization cycles until budgets are expended. So the takeaway here from this kind of step-two process is that not all projects in the current STIP, the 2020 to 2029 STIP, that are being evaluated in the draft are going to receive right-of-way or construction funding, and so some of these will remain unfunded and get prioritized in the next STIP cycle. So following these kinds of two steps, what I wanted to do is just take a look at Morrisville specifically to understand what projects are staying committed, which ones are getting new funding. In the step one here, we have the committed and scheduled-for-delivery projects. So these are projects that are going forward. There are several on the list here. This is NC 54 widening, keeping in mind this is Shiloh Glen, Perimeter Park Drive only, McCrimmon Parkway widening and flyover project. We have Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One, Louis Stevens Drive Sidewalk Gap Project, and Church Street Sidewalk Gap Project. So all of these are anticipated for construction to begin sometime in FY '23, with the exception of Church Street Sidewalk Gap Project, which is expected in FY '24. When you kind of look at that step-two process, we do have previously uncommitted projects scheduled to receive construction funding in the draft STIP. There are three on the list. The first one is Aviation Parkway Widening. This project was previously put on hold in 2019 due to different funding flow issues at NCDOT. It is looking like funding, construction funding would be scheduled for FY '30. We are looking at, in FY '26, townwide ITS signal system funding, and then also in FY '30, funding for the construction of NC 147 extension. And I do have NC 147 in here. It is going to be renamed to 885 if it hasn't already. One thing to note here is the STIP does identify this connection going to McCrimmon Parkway. So I did add a couple subbullets here to note that the town's comprehensive transportation plan does show the town's desire for that extension to connect only to Davis Drive and not to connect to McCrimmon Parkway. I have had some conversations with NCDOT, and the final determination for that connection has not yet been made. They are looking at a variety of alternatives, whether it's only to Davis Drive, whether it's only to McCrimmon Parkway, whether it's a combination of both. It does appear, maybe on a preliminary level, that there might be more benefit to only connecting to Davis Drive, but I did want to let you know that although it does say McCrimmon Parkway in the STIP, it is, a decision has not yet been made on that particular connection. And then the last item to mention here are projects that will be reprioritized in the next cycle, and this does include Rapid Bus Transit Service from Morrisville to Cary. One thing to note here is not that this is not a worthy project, but it may have been, not knowing kind of all of the details and the prioritization, it may have been a later project that was added, so it didn't make the cut. Also, you'll be aware that Campo is undertaking a major investment study, looking at Rapid Bus from Cary Depot to RTP that goes through Morrisville, so that study's still underway. Hopefully, at the end of that, we'll also have a better idea of the best alternative and what might be needed to accomplish that. So I did want to point that out as well. Just looking forward, Campo is looking for comments on the draft STIP by June 30th. Staff is not proposing to submit any comments based on what is currently in the draft STIP. They'll take between June 30th and September 30th to reconcile comments, to address swap requests, and I'll talk about swaps on the next slide, but just to kind of provide that timeline as well. And NCDOT is looking to release the draft STIP for public comment in December and anticipate an adoption next June. One thing that was built into the STIP this time around is the option to swap projects, whether it's an unfunded project for a funded project, moving timelines around. There are a lot of requirements that need to be met in order to make that happen, and sometimes there are challenges in the fact that you pull one project, and it's kind of a puzzle, and everything sort of starts to move around. Staff has not, based on the projects that are in Morrisville, knowing what's going forward with funding, have not recommended or submitted any swaps to Campo. However, one thing that was maybe not on our radar is kind of thinking about multi-community swaps, and I did want to mention in the last bullet point that Campo is reviewing the potential for U 5966, which is the NC 147 extension, to be swapped for perhaps unfunded projects such as at-grade or grade separation rail projects. It might not be in Morrisville, but could benefit Morrisville, or looking at Rapid Bus projects as well. There have been no specific swaps proposed at this time, but I did want to mention this. In case there are any specific swaps that do come forward, we may be back with you relatively soon with regard to that, but at this time, just mentioning that that is something that Campo is taking a look at.
And they'd be okay with that after the 30th deadline?
Yes, because they have, they'll have discussions. Really, they want to kind of gather out all the community feedback and what they're looking for, if there's concerns over certain things, and then start having those discussions after June 30th to reconcile any swaps or differences.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And the last slide here is just looking, I know we're just starting into the draft STIP, but looking beyond the 2024 to 2033 STIP. And NCDOT is anticipating going back to a two-year cycle of prioritization and adopting the STIP, and with that, they are looking at accepting new projects for the following STIP. So the 2026 to 2035 STIP, that window would open next summer, so if that does happen, we'll likely be back before you as well, looking at some local priorities, but it has been some time before new projects have been accepted for the STIP. So I know a lot of people will be looking forward to that. With that, I'll see if there are any questions.
Recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
So, thank you for the update, Danielle. More of a comment first, and then I do have a question. Your slide where you talked about STIP, step one, and then those are major projects that are here in Morrisville. So I'm happy to see that they're at least moving forward, probably not on their original timeframes, but at least they're moving forward. So that's really important. On the next slide, where you talk about STIP, step two, I tried to write this down, I don't know if I wrote it down right, but you said the NC 147 extension, that project number has been changed from the 5966?
Oh, the route number, 885. So with the connector opening further up on 147, it's all being changed, I think, 885, NC 885 instead of 147.
Okay, got it. Okay, then I misunderstood.
Sorry for the confusion.
What did she do? I'll ask that when we're done. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, that, I'd be okay if that one's extended a little bit. But, but, and you answered my other question in your presentation, that the swaps, you will come back if we need more information, if there is more information on that, but my question was, does the swap mean that swap is internal to Morrisville only, but clearly it's not? It could be swapped out for another jurisdictions project. So I think that's important to keep that on our radar, too. So thank you for clarifying that. But again, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Garamella.
Thanks, Danielle. If you can go up one slide, yeah, this one, HL 0033, we are funding this, right? Like, you know?
Yes, it's, currently it was a 640 match for this, so there is federal grant funding that goes along with it.
Okay, and that, the federal grant is coming through Campo or?
It comes through Campo, and all of the projects that are in the Campo tip have to be in the STIP as well.
Okay, because I was, I didn't, I thought we were completely funding, so I did not know the federal piece of, okay. And where is the project for the grade separation on McCrimmon? You know, I know, like, that was there, we had a presentation right before COVID, like the Davis Drive seven lane, and with whatever that's.
Yeah, so it's going to be this one, server wasn't clear on this, I've highlighted, 5747, they have part A and B. So part B is the flyover, both of them are happening at the same time. So you will have the four-laning of McCrimmon Parkway includes the intersection at Davis, with a lot of improvements going on there, over to NC 54, so the flyover over the railroad tracks and NC 54.
So if you can restate what is A, what is B, that would be good, because?
Oh, yeah. A would be pretty much everything except the flyover, and the flyover would be part B.
Okay, and so we don't still have the timeline, because it's said somewhere in the newspaper, like, when they pushed it to 2027 or 2028?
Yeah, this project currently is expected to be let for construction in April of 2023, so next year. I mean, the timeline could always get pushed out, you know, a couple months, but it is expected to begin construction sometime next year.
Okay, perfect. And that does not include widening and flyover? Like, what about the Davis Drive? Does it include the Davis Drive portion, too?
It does, yes. So the whole intersection of Davis Drive, which technically McCrimmon a little past Davis Drive, and then north and south on Davis Drive as well.
Perfect. And then, if you scroll one page down, I think my recollection is that U 5966, we had sent a letter saying that we are not interested in the connection to McCrimmon Parkway, that, and we, you know, wanted Davis, because the traffic that comes in is already, you know, doing it. So, and my understanding, this funding comes from the highway, like, you know, toll road has a different bucket, that's what we have told versus the regular funding. Is that still the case?
I would have to look at the funding source for this one in particular. NCDOT is, through our discussions, they are very aware of Morrisville's desire to see the connection to Davis only, so they are looking at a variety of, you know, analyses with traffic and future, future traffic, to make sure what, you know, the best option is. They have not made a decision yet, so we are still making sure that, you know, what's in the CTP is something, the direction that it also goes.
Okay, and if you can find out, because Benjamin before used to say, like, any of the toll roads come from a different bucket of, not from the regular DOT, because there's this allocation that is unrestricted kind of a thing for their stuff, it doesn't even come to Campo, I don't know, like, how it works, but.
Yeah, I can, I can check into that. I do know DOT is managing, managing the project, because it will have some of the connection to the toll road, but also.
Thank you very much. This is great update.
Okay, I'll next recognize councilmember Rao. First off, did you have anything on the agenda that might be a conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest?
No.
No, okay. Your questions for Ms. Kittredge?
Yeah, it's a great presentation. I just was curious, for the, just for the public, will there be, is there information out there for the dollar value of the projects, you know, so that we can convey that, you know, even though some of them are further down, just to know, you know, the kinds of projects that are coming in?
Yeah, and so one of the things I did do was kind of, they provided, NCDOT through Campo has provided a spreadsheet of all of the projects. I did filter them down to just Morrisville-specific ones, so that should be included hopefully as an attachment, and then it'll be able to go to, like, the end, I think it's the end column that has, like, the total amount for the project. One thing that might not be in there, there are some projects that are under construction right now, so what I've presented here are just ones that have not received construction funding or haven't started them, but if there's a specific project that's already underway, we can also look that up, too.
Well, there are two reasons why I said that. I mean, I think, one, there's, we need to make sure that we're conveying to the public that efforts are being made to address the infrastructure and that there's a process. There's still people out there that assume that, you know, we can just go and find money in our budget to pay for these roads. So just, you know, maybe we can, in PR and communications, let the people know out there that are frustrated about, you know, lack of infrastructure. And then the other thing to the council is, I think that as we continue to look at legislative agenda down the road, I mean, I think a lot of us are just concerned about DOT with declining revenues and different models with more electric vehicles, so hopefully we can push for something like that, because this has got to change. A lot of their projects get pushed back, and I think it's just bad for everybody, so that might be something that we think about this year, to meet with the secretary, or, you know, figure out, you know, how we can go to a higher level, if possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I am looking at the STIP spreadsheet that you provided as the attachment of just the Morrisville project, and I was just curious as to why the McCrimmon widening project and the flyover is split into three separate items? It's the A and the B, and then there's just 5747, and the A has division five, and the other two are region C. So why, why did they split those up like that?
Yeah, and so what you'll see is that, kind of the overall one with the 5747, there's not, I mean, there is a little bit of dollar cost that is associated with it at the end, but my understanding is the projects might have been on different timelines as far as the construction of them, and then sort of as the project has progressed, the timelines have evened up. There's also, it does appear, different maybe buckets of funding that are associated with those as well. This project is now also happening at the same time as the NC 54 widening project, so they're kind of looking at, the timelines are sort of messed up with a lot of these. Is my only, I don't have your specific answer to that, but that is kind of my best guess, and happy to look into it more if that's of interest.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that's necessary. And then my other question is with regards to the widening of NC 54. On here, the project is just listed that the widening is from NC 540 to Perimeter Park Drive. So I thought there was another project on the books that took that widening further south to Cary. Is that not the case?
There is not. Even in the, unfortunately, in current STIP, there is nothing even in the unfunded years for that, so as far as, you know, in the Morrisville section, I know that's a portion that is of interest to the town in general, but it is not currently in the STIP.
So is there anything we can do as a town or as a council members to advocate for widen, getting a project? I mean, how, I don't even know how we would go about doing that.
Yeah.
Getting something on the books to widen 54 to the town limits, at least.
And I think this will fall into the next middle of projects, and when there is pretty much a solicitation of local projects that would be of interest. I know that as far as kind of need and bottlenecks and congestion related to that may factor higher in prioritization, but that would be one way to, to have that added to a list.
Yeah, and get the town of Cary on board as well. All right, thank you.
Yeah, because we have the NC 54 and more study that's aging quickly, unfortunately, but, um, yeah, that portion from perimeter down to Cary, even when we break it into smaller pieces, never really rises high on the prioritization, unfortunately, so that'll keep on being on our radar, though. Everyone's had a chance to speak, so I recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by councilmember Garamella, please.
So, yeah, I was just going to follow up on that, too. There was a time when we had the project, that it was the full widening of 54, and it was recommended to break it up, because we were never going to get the whole project funded. It was too much money. The 54 and more study, and if I recall, that was like a, at that, and again, this is an old study, but they anticipated, or they projected, that it would cost $250 million to widen all of 54. So to have that one project get funded at one time was going to be like a Herculean effort, so that's why it was divided up, and I'm grateful, you know, at least after all this time, that we're getting a portion of 54 widened, the northern part, but to your point, yeah, it all needs to be widened 100%. But of course, we're also always competing with everybody else across the triangle for funds, and, and I agree with getting Cary on board. We have had this discussion in years past, when we had our joint meetings with the town of Cary, that the widening of 54 matters to their residents just as much as it matters to our residents, because they're all using that same roadway to get that and forth to work. So, so anyhow, I just wanted to add that, but I did think of one more question, Danielle. When you talked about the BRT study that's still underway for the Cary to RTP, which obviously includes Morrisville, when, when is that study supposed to be, the results of that study going to be completed?
So now the phase-two engagement has just been kind of wrapped up with that. It should probably, originally I thought it was going to be more of the summertime, but it may be more of the fall. It is anticipated this year to have some of that. There's a lot of analysis going on right now, so maybe we're near the end of summer, fall time.
Okay, thank you. And then one more, one more comment that I, I want to make sure I say publicly, because it's important, and I glossed over it when we talked about, and you still have it up, the step-two slide. The fact that Aviation Parkway widening has been pushed again, and now it looks like it's out to FY '30 is really disappointing, and I know that's not the fault of anybody here, and especially our staff that's worked really hard on this, and this council, and councils in the past. The Aviation Parkway widening is a very important project to the town of Morrisville, so I don't know, what are the odds of that, of us moving that up sooner, or is that just out of the question?
Yeah, I think unfortunately, because we don't have a large project selection going on right now, we would have to find something that was already programmed for construction funding earlier and ask to swap, to swap that. So I think, you know, based on, you know, what we have and sort of that limited projects going forward, it's probably not, you know, an option, but we can look into it, knowing that that's, see what, see what else might be available.
Okay, and that was kind of my thought process with the 147 extension. It was like, I would swap that for aviation in a heartbeat, me personally, but I realize that may not be, I may not have that opportunity, so.
And it's also on, it is on the same timeline as well, so.
It's not helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, one thing, Danielle, like the spreadsheet that you had put, but also the previous slide and this particular slide, want to understand how much is the town's contribution towards it, if at all any, because it's important for our people to know, like, we are investing in our roads in like 3040, 3060, or 3060. Because it's important for our people to know, like, we are investing in our roads in like 30, 40, 30, 60, or 370 or, you know, 20, 80. Because it's costs a lot of money. And I know like the one for the Davis Drive, Macramin, like flyover, there was a lot of talk of how much sidewalk and other things that we had to put in. Like when you're saying already the construction is ready, like it's getting constructed next year, do we even have numbers for that? Or, you know, because I thought 23 is quite fast already.
Yeah, and so the first two projects, the NC 54 and the McCrimmon Parkway, those are a hundred percent NC DOT funded. We do have betterments, some sidewalk widening that you had mentioned. So NC DOT is still working up numbers for those. With betterments for these particular projects, we are billed after the project is finished. So we are looking, you know, maybe two, two or years out or so. So we are still working on those agreements. They'll come back before all of you, once they do have them prepared. But that's something we do have our eye on and looking at it as far as cost to the town.
Okay, yeah, and rest of the other projects, if we have any, like, you know, a hundred percent excellent, you know, if at all, that would be good to know.
Yeah, and I can just kind of briefly mention too, I know Airport Boulevard, we are at that 60, 40. There are some rising construction costs. We can get more of a, you know, an estimate. I know some bond money does go towards that. So we may be putting in about four million. And then the sidewalk projects, we do have some matching money that goes into each of those. And I'd be happy to take a little bit of a closer look. They may be around 80, 20 match.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So it sounds like we'll probably be hearing from you when the swaps come up. And if you do an abbreviated presentation, perhaps having a slide that combines the data chart with this, with the splits and the amount of dollars that we're paying and not, would help the residents understand a little better and meet our need to communicate that to them. And I'd like to just emphasize that I agree with Councilmember Rao as well, that we really need the pie to be bigger for the entire state when it comes to funding for roadways. Greenways and bike pad are also very important, so the pie has to get bigger for all these different options. And as the gas tax goes down, that becomes problematic. And as Councilmember Fender noted, NC 54 is really important to us, so we need to keep on bringing it up and keeping it on our radar and not letting that fall away. So thank you very much for the presentation. I'm hopeful that some swaps do come forward that might benefit us. And we're very glad that these step one projects continue forward, even if they are somewhat delayed. So thank you very much for all this information and keep it coming.
All right, thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our Communications Director, Will Glenn, who's going to give us a presentation about upcoming events. And this is the one that we just sort of added to the agenda.
Good evening.
Evening.
Will Glenn, Communications Director, thank you all for adding me to the agenda tonight. I am here to preview our second annual July 3 Family Fun Festival, another historic event in the making. I say historic because last year was the first time we had the event here on Town Hall Drive. And this year is going to be our first time having fireworks here. I'm sort of excited about that. But otherwise, the event may look kind of similar to last year as far as live entertainment, food trucks and games and such. I do want to highlight and mention for the first time, we're doing arts and crafts vendors. So that should be a big attraction. I want our residents to know to bring money for food, games and for our vendors this year. So be on the lookout for that. Also, we're going to have some caricature artists, balloon sculptors. And another, let me back up. So the event is July 3 from 4 to 9 p.m. Another key is going to be, of course, parking. You can't park directly here. We're going to be at Cedar Ford District Park and also Cedar Ford Community Center. Shuttles will run from there from 3:30, beginning at 3:30. We're going to extend that beyond, of course, the, after the fireworks. We're expecting some long extended lines for the crowds gathering at our stops with the shuttles. So we're going to extend that beyond the fireworks, of course. Those are the keys to our event. I mentioned the parking, the fireworks, of course, praying for good weather. I've saw possibly 30% scattered storms, so no washout as of right now, but we're keeping an eye on the weather, of course, as well. So, and I'll pause for any questions that you may have at this time.
So if the weather does get bad, we'll hit our social media hard.
Definitely.
For people to know.
Yeah, it's typically rain or shine in the case they're saying like a washout or a steady downpour throughout the day. But we'll definitely note residents, in that case, social media and website as well.
Okay, Mayor Pretend Johnson.
So you're, this is a new location now for fireworks. So the big question is, where do we position our chairs? Where should we all face? Where are the fireworks actually going to be? Because we'll be, we'll be asked that question.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. So I do want to mention that unlike at Morrisville Community Park, you can only see the fireworks from Town Hall Drive. So you want to be here on site at this location. As far as where you can see it from the street, anywhere from around about here, even extended beyond that, you'll be able to see them as they go up in the air. We'll have long space here, like last year when folks were sitting out watching the, the other displays. So we'll definitely have ample space anywhere along here. You can set up a chair or look up, you'll be able to see them.
So the fireworks will actually be set off like by the farmer's market?
Exactly.
So everyone needs to kind of face that direction.
Yep.
So, okay, all right, thank you.
And will people be on the other side of the stormwater on the greenway there? Would that be a good place for them to set up as well?
Yes, that'll be open as well.
Okay, so anywhere between Morrisville Carpenter Road and essentially the farmer's market is a good place to set up chairs?
Yep.
Okay, what about people, so the fireworks will happen at dark?
Yes.
Probably around 8:45 or 9?
Probably around 9 ish. It's been getting late a little.
We're going to actually stop people from traveling near the roundabout a few minutes before that, right? So you don't want to be caught on the wrong side?
Definitely. We'll have officers there and barricades in place prior to that. There will be a one lane of walk-up traffic, but not during fireworks. We will be shutting that, shutting that down around probably 8:30 ish for any traffic at that end.
Okay, so people try to get in position a little bit early. There's going to be lots of food trucks, lots of entertainment. So be there early and enjoy the festival.
Lots of fun.
Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, whenever we do something new at a new location, it's, it's a challenge, so we really appreciate staff.
So I want to mention two more things if I could before, before I sit down. We're planning also for Harris Mill Road Fire Station Groundbreaking. It's going to be on July 27. You should have received invites today. It's going to be at 10 a.m., so of course, planning for that daily. And also our Smoresville is going to be on August the 10th, so plans are going to work for that as well. So just want to mention those.
Both of those are open to the public?
Yes, they are.
Okay, wonderful. Excellent. Thank you very much. And as always, keep an eye on our social media. Our Communications Department is really going gangbusters and letting people know about what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to item nine, which is public address. Was there any emails that we received or people signed up?
No, sir. There were no emails received and no individuals sign up to give public address in person.
Okay, is there anyone here in the room who failed to sign up who wishes to address this body for three minutes? Okay, so you'll have three minutes. If you could state your name and your residential address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, hey, good evening. Thank you, council, mayor and town managers. My name is Ram Kuntumukla, 205 Oceanside Lane, Cary, NC. I'm here primarily for, there was an email that was sent by myself and my partners a couple of weeks back, probably last week, to the town, the council and many other local residents who are supporters of Cardinals with some information. And mayor has responded to that email. Thank you for that. But I came here actually to set the record straight on some of the things that were not accurate. The Cardinals was canceled not because of any internal disputes, but it was canceled because of a lack of facilities provided with the Cardinals. And so I just want to make that record straight. And also it was a partnership between my former partner and ACE that resulted in that being canceled and actually came out in the News and Observer as well. So I just want to make that point pretty clear. But more importantly, that tells about the governance and the process in which ACE operates. And we want the town to be aware of the fact that if these are the practices that are acceptable, we want the town to take a hard look at it and once again have a review of the contract. I think I'm here basically to plead the town to please have a look at the contract and review the contract and do the necessary things for the town's taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. And your name and address, residential address for the record, please, sir?
Good evening, mayor, town council. Good evening, Office of the Town. My name is Sunil Batla and live at 501 Willingham Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. The reason I came here was I submitted a public request, you know, on May 17th date exactly. So it is, it has been a while. I haven't received any correspondence or feedback for that email. So if you would like to expedite that, that would be great. And requesting the town officials to take a look at it and respond back to it as I need to provide those details. And I need to talk with my legal team on that. Thank you.
Okay, was there anyone else? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to item 10, public hearing. There is one public hearing item on tonight's agenda. The development agreement for the construction of a portion of International Drive. Chris Lawson, Planning Manager, will facilitate the item. Mr. Lawson.
Right, good evening, council. All right, so good evening, council. Tonight, I'll provide counsel a brief on a proposed development agreement with a company named Spark Infrastructure, property owner, for the extension of International Drive. Please note, I gave a similar presentation to council in April, briefing council about this opportunity. At that time, council directed staff to incorporate funding potentially for this agreement into the capital investment plan. Tonight will also serve as a public hearing. And then finally, I want to note that the town's stormwater engineering manager, Ben Mills, is here with us, as well as two members of the development team, in case there's any questions. So just some background, International Drive, it has been shown on the CIP since 2004. It is located on the eastern side of town in a largely industrial area. And, and part of the reason to extend the International Drive and connect it back out to airport is to keep a lot of that commercial traffic off of Chapel Hill Road, try to get it back out to 40 easier without having to go on one of our main thoroughfares. This is a picture of where International Drive currently terminates. On the left and right, there are new developments there, newer developments in the last five years. And again, the road will just continue through where the orange markings are at the end of the picture there. So just some background on this request. So developments generally build any required road improvements that are in front of their property or adjacent to their property. There are two developments on the right and left side of that green rectangle that's in the picture. Neither of those developments continued International Drive largely due to the presence of environmental features such as a repairing buffer. Generally, development's able to build over a repairing buffer if there is what's called a logical terminus, meaning the road goes somewhere, that's useful. In this case, the road would have ended right on top of the buffers and they were not allowed to construct the road. Essentially, long story short, the road would have normally been built, but it was not allowed to. So instead of the road being built, the town collected payment alue and is responsible for the construction at a later date. So currently, there's development named Spark that's proposed on the northern side of those environmental features. Spark will be able to finish all the road connections in the area. And staff has proposed the development agreement to partner with Spark to finish International Drive, which includes the area that's currently within the town owned right of way. Just moving along, this is a map showing phases one and two of Spark and showing the major road network in the area. Again, there's a green rectangle highlighting the real subject area where the town owns right of way without the road actually being constructed yet. And that's, that's the area that would be constructed essentially for the town. Moving along, this is a map that shows many of the proposed developments in the general area. And really just showing this is, is a kind of framing why the need for the road connection is crucial right now. As you remember, most of his property was rezoned last summer and since then, town's just received a number of development applications for the area. Again, the subject area is down in the red line. So just some key facts, essentially the town does not have to enter this agreement. However, what that means is there'll be an unfinished road that will be the town's responsibility at a, at a future date to construct. And there's no other development that's required to construct this road. Again, it's going to be the town's responsibility in the future to finish the connection if, if the town does not enter this agreement with Spark. So next, I'll just kind of go over some of the, the key parts of the agreement with Spark, and I'll just kind of read them. Essentially, Spark will construct the remainder of International Drive that's within the town owned right of way within three years. They will apply for appropriate permits for the town with, with the, with the town serving as the formal applicant. Essentially, Spark and their consultants will, will do the legwork for the town. And Spark will pay for environmental permits that are outside of the town owned right of way. So if you remember in an earlier slide, International Drive extends not only on town-owned property, but also property owned by Spark. So those permits will come in together, but Spark will pay for everything that's on Spark property. The town will only pay for what's on town-owned right of way. Next, highlight some of the parts the town agrees to. So essentially, the town will reimburse Spark the $354,000 that was previously collected from other developments. The town would serve as an official applicant for environmental permits along International Drive and the Morrisville Connector. That's another road in the area, but the town would only pay for town-owned portions. So the town may serve as an official applicant for permits that are on Spark's property, but we will only pay for parts that are in, that are on town-owned right of way currently. If you have questions about that, I'll have to turn it over to, to Ben or the applicant team. And then finally, the town will contribute up to $500,000 for environmental permits and wetland mitigation that may be required in the town-owned right of way. And so that, that money is not just permitting fees, but actually goes to wetland mitigation for, for future wetlands built in the same water basin. And I want to highlight that is the, at the very beginning, when I said council indicated, you know, that staff incorporate this funding, that's the up to $500,000. And that number has not been set yet. We expect it to be lower, hopefully $500,000 as a max. So staff recommend approval. Essentially, I've listed a few departments here. These are essentially the town's all development review staff. And really just feel like this is the best time for this connection to happen. There is a private partner that'll work with the town to manage the construction for the town. And again, if not now, then the town will have to build the road in the future. Essentially summarize what I just said, why town staff recommend approval at this time. Your planning and zoning board did recommend unanimous approval. And then at your July 12 meeting, that is when action has been scheduled. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I can go ahead and, now, anyone have any questions before I open the public hearing? Councilmember Garamella? Okay. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone signed up, sir, for the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, this may be the first time that people are becoming aware of this. So I'd, after we have questions, I'd entertain a motion to close it, but I'd be in favor of leaving it open until the 12th. And if no one shows up, then we can still take action. Councilmember Garamella?
Thanks, Chris, for this update. I totally, I, you know, agree, this is a very critical connection we just needed. I had two questions from my recollections in the back. The wetland mitigation, are we, what kind of mitigation are we doing? Are we trying to give it to the mitigation bank? Are we trying to basically create the wetlands somewhere in the town of Morrisville?
So the town will pay that money to the state directly and the state will handle that part, yeah? And the state will handle that part? Yeah.
That, that's a good option. And the other thing is like a takeaway for this, right? Like this doesn't repeat again. I know, you know, I had asked Michelle too, because we don't have in our ordinance that considers environmental fees as part of any payment in lieu. Where are we, is there any action item taken from a UDO point of view? Because tomorrow, we could get some other stream and we will just go by linear fit of how much road without considering the environmental issues.
Yeah, and I'll say this is, this one specifically is unusual by the way the repairing buffers lined up. There were, happened to be two, one runs parallel with the road. I would say this is definitely something staff's been looking into, trying to formulate how to handle this better in the future. I can say that as far as I, I found, there's only three other potential roads in the future that could happen like this, that kind of continue all the way and aren't just road widenings for existing roads. But yeah, this is something that, that since, since this came up, staff's looked into how to handle this more properly in the future.
Yeah, because as you're thinking of a roads, it could be like, you know, a sidewalk and it could be, you know, bike ways or something else that could come different locations. But if we can have that set in, so we can factor others, you know, it's just lessons learned that what we came up with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by myself?
Yeah, can you go to the slide? A little bit right here. So the roads that are sketched in there in red are, any of those going over existing roads?
No, those, those will be all brand new roads. And to explain it a little further, the, the town's transportation plan requires not only International Drive, but also the T here, which the town's transportation plan identifies as the Morrisville East Connector. The actual road will have a different name, but that's, those are roads called for in the town's transportation plan.
Okay, because I'm looking at a satellite view on Google Maps and there's a road already in that general area. I don't know the state of it. I'm just curious, what would happen to that?
Yeah.
But I guess it's irrelevant to this discussion. But okay, but my last question is, so we would pay for wetland mitigation, but what form would that end up being? What type of mitigation would end up occurring?
Yeah, and let me clarify, the, the up to $500,000, the town would pay that directly to the state. We would not transfer that money to the, any, any private entity. What, I'm not sure.
And the state would then do?
Yeah, so.
Plan, a design?
Just to generally explain it, the, the state takes that money and identifies locations elsewhere. It most likely wouldn't be in Morrisville, but it's in the same river basin to help replace those wetlands.
Oh, okay. All right, that's it.
Okay. Do you want them to bring up iMaps and actually find that road? You want them to look, bring up iMaps to find that road to get more clarification on that, or?
No.
Okay. And I guess you guys have already looked to see if there's any way to detour the road a little bit to avoid the wetlands. I saw one of the slides, the repairing buffer is pretty much a lot of this box, but can we go outside this box and be a lot more efficient with taxpayer funds?
Chris, would you like to? This is Chris Bostic, he's the project engineer. I'll let him speak to kind of how the road was designed in that, that fashion.
Because it looked like the rivers were coming from the east, but if there's room to the west to miss them perhaps. Your name and role for the record, please, sir?
Sure. Chris Bostic with Kimling Horn and Associates. I'm the project engineer of the project. Yeah, as you know, we would, we would certainly love to find another way that was less costly, but it, in this case, it just doesn't exist. When you're, when you're building a road like International Drive, you can only, you know, turn it in a certain direction, a certain radius to keep it, keep it a safe design. And also, the right of way already exists for a portion of the road that is not built. So it has to go through that portion. So unfortunately, it is fixed and it just happens to be like Chris mentioned, right on top of two environmental features that are just unavoidable.
Well, I would push back on the fact that we already have some right of way. It might be more efficient to buy more if that's a reasonable avenue. Because 500,000 is a lot of money for something that should have already been paid by the developer.
So unfortunately, in this case, both of the features are, they run from west to east. So even if you turn it to the right or turn it to the left, you're still going to have to cross them at some point in time to get to the, to the Marshall connector that Chris is talking about.
Okay, so you have to cross both of them?
Can you pull up a map? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's fine. That's a good point.
Pull up a map and, and indicate where you're talking.
Eric, can I open another attachment?
Thank you.
Let's do number two. If you scroll down to the bottom one, oh, I can do, oh, yeah, that's right. And I'll, this is.
That's it.
You all think it's the best one, okay.
Correct.
And so I've highlighted in this map, the, the red, the right red box is what's the town's, is in the town owned right of way currently. And then the, you can see the, the buffers and how they go. So that right of way is already set up to the, the northernmost of that red rectangle.
Okay, so going to the east, you still have to cross it, but there's no way to go further west, like one red box equivalent?
Yeah, so that, that adjacent, those properties are owned by, you know, private property owners that aren't a part of, a part of our project. And I would still say that even whatever required radius we would have to turn the road to the left as you're looking at the plan, you would still impact both of those streams. There's no way that we could turn it quick enough to not impact those two.
It's just the level of impact is what I'm looking at. I'm looking at, we're really gutting the whole thing.
Sure.
So if we could skirt around the edges. But I understand this is a real, a challenge, engineering wise and financial wise. Okay, that, I appreciate you answering that question. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else? Okay. Seeing none, I would ask, would, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Or are people willing to leave that open till the 12th in case other things, other people want to share their thoughts?
I think you should leave it open.
Okay, so that's two of us keeping it open, so that would be. I'd entertain a motion in case anyone wants to make it. Okay, hearing done, we're, do we need a motion to leave it open, sir? Attorney Gray, just leave it open? Okay. Okay, so we're going to leave this public hearing open until the 12th. Look forward to hearing from anyone who's interested. Otherwise, we're still planning on taking action on the 12th. Anything else you want to add before we're done?
Nothing else. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and thank you for, the applicant for being here. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item 11, new items. There is one new item on tonight's agenda, the Town Center Development Plan. Brendan Zudima, Deputy Town Manager, will facilitate the item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Going to scroll down to the second slide here. We've included a slide that shows that current program you saw during the last meeting. We can certainly go back to that. It's really just there for a reference for you. Nothing has changed from the last meeting on that drawing. So that's just a reference point. If we need to go back to it, we're happy to do that. So just want to highlight for you sort of the purpose of the meeting tonight. Again, the primary reason is that we spoke with you on June 14th and there were some questions raised, both in the open session about the presentation and the updated concept, and then also some questions and some follow-up asked for out of the closed session. We'll deal with that portion when we move to a closed session. For the open session, we again want to bring back answers to some of the questions you posed. We'll be honest, sometimes the answer is, we're working on that or we don't have that answer right now. It will be worked out. Again, do want to remind you that the purpose of the development plan is really to provide you and the community with the concept plan and a general financial pro forma to serve as the guide for ultimately creating the Development Services Agreement. That sticks with the layout that we proposed when you signed the MOU with Singh back in September. That clearly laid out that there would be a period of time for the creation of a development plan, which is intended to be conceptual, not intended to be specific, not intended to give you any final numbers, but to give you a, here's where we are today. If we built it today, we believe this is what it could be, understanding that there's a lot, a lot of details missing out of that. Details that need to come over the next several months towards the Development Services Agreement. So understand your interest in understanding what that all means, but want to balance that with an understanding that these are numbers to give you perspective and a concept. They are not intended to be what you would see when this Development Services Agreement is concluded. So if you were to elect to endorse this plan, what that means is that allows us to continue the collaboration forward between town staff, Singh, and with support from DFI, moving towards that Development Services Agreement. Again, the MOU calls for a three-month window with the possibility of two one-month extensions, if needed, to get that document completed. So if you were to complete or to endorse that in July, we'd be looking at worst case December, coming back to you potentially more, more likely October, November window to come back with a Development Services Agreement for you to consider approving. That would be when the financial commitment would occur on the part of the town. And that would include the specifics of, here's who's paying for what, here's what, where things are building, here's what's being built, all those details that, that we've been discussing with you for close to a year now probably, or a little bit more since we started getting into the agreement with Singh. So again, endorsement of that development plan now does not represent a financial commitment. We also don't want you to think that the numbers you'll see when we go talk about that in closed session are the numbers you will see in the fall. That may not, well, that likely will not be the case due to changing conditions, due to adding detail to this plan, due to decisions you may make along the way. And again, we won't talk to you in July and then not talk to you till November or December. We will be back with options and things to consider and staff recommendations, Singh recommendations about how to proceed on those items. So again, this, this conversation is really conceptual. We're going to answer as many questions as we can for you, but some of those questions just cannot be answered right now. Want to make sure I'm missing any points here. So we had discussed, coming back to you on July 12th to seek endorsement. We recognize there's still some discussion to be had, both in the open session, the closed sessions. Our proposal is to see how that goes. And then obviously, we have two council members who could not be here this evening. We want to make sure that they're informed of what the conversation was and that they're up to speed. Obviously, this is a significant decision in this process. So we will make arrangements to have that addressed as well. And then we'll come back July 12th and, and sort of with a feel for where we are. And perhaps if we don't get guidance from you tonight, we could discuss it again on the 12th and then potentially could come back if it needed to, the 26th, for, for you to consider endorsement through adoption of a resolution. Any questions about where we are or what we're attempting to do tonight? Okay?
Seeing none?
So before I turn it over to Singh to go through some of these updates, Frank and I talked a little bit, I think it's important to hear just for a minute from Frank as to the discussions that have occurred, his involvement in those discussions, consideration of what is possible under our own rules and guidelines, as well as under general statute, that definitely has some restrictions on the way we'd like to do it, perhaps versus the way that we need to do it to conform with our own rules and the general statutes. Frank?
Yeah, thank you, Brandon. As Brandon says, I think it's important to stop, step back and think of the big picture. And so this has been a three-step process all along. First was the RFP, which you put out. Singh Development was selected as the preferred contractor. The next step was the MOU, which was approved by Council for the development project. And then the third step would be development agreement. This is sort of in between, this is 2.5, where the developer gives you the concept that they're looking at and the pro forma projections and is looking for a, a head nod that we're all on the same track before both sides put a lot more work into it. But to Brandon's point, the general statutes provide that we, for a town center development, if the town has land, we do have to sell that and pay for that at a fair market. And the builder has to pay for that at a fair market value. And so that's one of the elements that we talked about at the last meeting. And in determining what's a fair market value, you can certainly take into account an appraisal. An appraisal is an opinion on value. The only real value is when the willing buyer and seller conclude the purchase. But an appraisal is an informed opinion on value and you can take that into account. The other thing is that one of the buzzwords in government these days is PPP, Public Private Partnership. The only way this is going to happen is with a public-private partnership. And that is a negotiation between the public side and the private side. And so when you look at the pro forma, when you look at the development plan, you know, things like the parking deck and the town green and all of these pieces are part of the whole. And so if you're engaging with your preferred developer, it is a negotiation. And you can push here and pull there, but at the end of the day, the private development has to enter into it and make a reasonable profit, or there will be no project. And so I, I think it's clear that this town center project will take significant public investment. And you, you know, obviously, there's a lot, a lot of miles to travel as to how that's actually put a dollar price on it. But we have good advice from DFI about what's worked in other communities and they'll help us evaluate the pro formas and the projections. But that's just kind of a big picture, that at the end of the day, this is a public-private partnership and we are negotiating with our preferred provider.
Thank you, Frank. So again, really two parts tonight. Part one is this open session. I'm going to turn it over to Avi in just a second to let him walk through some feedback on what you asked about. There were some questions about parking, some questions about some other amenities and things. Again, reminding you, sometimes we have very good answers for that and sometimes we have, we're going to continue to work on that and hear your feedback. I hope you will recognize the work that has gone into it up this point. We have met every other week minimally since September to bring it to this point. We have tried our best to listen to what your feedback is, what your interests are. We have not forgotten the information we've already collected from the community through some surveys. And then of course, we're being guided by, again, our own documents, our strategic plan, the UDO, the general statute, other guidelines that are in there. And we've worked with other departments to get it to this point as a concept that we believe can work. And then we're going to ask you to endorse that concept and then let us continue to come back to you with other items as necessary. And then part two of this, we'll talk a little bit more with Eric before we again turn it back to Avi and the Singh team to talk to you about the financials. So for right now, I'm going to turn it over to Avi. He's going to address some of the questions that you posed back on June, I guess 14th it was. And then we'll, happy to take any questions. I'll be available, Eric will be available if it's not specifically to Singh.
Thanks, Brandon. Council, good evening. With me tonight is, again, Money Graywall from Singh, Jacob Shermer from Singh, and then you guys are meeting Matt Berberich for the first time. We joined the team back in, in the fall and is a proud Morrisville resident. And his wife is, they moved here from Asheville last fall and his wife is working at Morrisville Elementary. And so you're quickly becoming Morrisville fans. And so he's been working on a lot of the details of this project in the background, but you know, you guys haven't seen him, but he's here to show his pretty face tonight. And so with that, I'll get into some of the questions that came up after the last meeting. There we go. I'll, I'm, I'll primarily focus on the, the parking, which is, which was a lot of discussion from last couple of weeks ago. And so this is, again, this was the slide kind of showing the parking calculations. This hasn't changed since the last meeting. And we can go back up to this one, but I'll drop down real quick to kind of show you. And so there's a question about how many of the seven or nine spaces that are kind of in the overall area. overall area, both existing and being created, how much of that would be available to the public? And so, really, we just did a simple calculation, how many spaces would be kind of reserved for the residential units? So, 345 approximately for the apartments, and another 48 for the townhomes. And, again, that, you know, those numbers could change, but right now, with the current plan, you know, 709 minus 393, 316 total spaces that would be available for the public. Another discussion last, a couple of weeks ago, was about the public safety, secure parking. You guys might recall that we were reserving these spaces here for the public safety office, and Brandon may be able to speak a little better to the needs of that, but since subsequently, he was able to chat with the police chief, and it seems like they would be okay with, with this, you know, 24 spaces that are potentially being created over here, so this, all of these spaces here would go back to the public use. And so, you know, that, those 24 spaces that are right in here weren't included in the 709 count, so, that's just an additional 24 spaces that are there for the, for the public safety. We had some discussion on the, the needs for the Fox Club Drive extension being a private street versus public street. We had looked into a cost, what the cost difference would be. It's about $400,000, and there's, you know, I think some more work to be done in working with the town staff on what the differences would be and how it can make that a public road if, if needed. And, again, there was just, there was more discussions on the town green and how it's programmed, and I think like, like Brandon had mentioned, you know, a lot of the plans for the, the town green is just, you know, very kind of conceptual in nature. We really like it, we're really excited about it, but by no means is that a hard and fast, like this has to be here, there has to be a pavilion here, there has to be a stage here, the stage has to be oriented this way or that way. You know, we kind of, this is all representative of what we think would be the best in, in working with designers and taking input from the survey that came back and, and folks on town staff, and kind of our own views on what we think it should be, having toured different town centers, you know, in different parts of the country, and so, but by no, no means is that final, you know, so, you know, we looked into some of, some of the things on moving the pavilion. We looked into a potential splash pad here on number 14. Scrolling back up now. Down in here, I think that was an approximate cost we had gotten from one of our consultants, about $300,000 on a, on a, on a similar splash pad that was recently installed in the area. And, again, and if you guys have any questions on any of these, these answers, feel free to stop me at any time.
Okay. If I could just go in. We could talk about the pavilion. I think the location, if you guys think is good, that's fine. I was hoping it would be something kind of iconic there.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, I like the idea of the stage being totally open, just pretty much a roof. I don't know if that would be possible, to do that on the pavilion side, too. It would be kind of the same thing, but serve the same purpose. So, I, I guess, if you're looking for a location for the pavilion, I guess we could probably bless that now.
Yeah.
That's what you need. Was everyone comfortable with the location of the pavilion pretty much right on the traffic circle, or you had some thoughts? Councilmember Garamella?
I, I think the whole idea is just a concept here, you know, these, you know, they need time to go back and do the designing and do all the other studies before even we even decided. We have not even discussed into fine details about the investment and what goes in, so I think it's too premature to even talk about any locations, you know, to even say where it will go.
Do you have a reaction from that, from staff? Because they're asking now, so it's not premature. It's part of the process now, I guess.
I mean, it's, it's, it's open for discussion, right? Like, we're not, it's not a hard, I don't think you guys have to, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but I don't think it's something you guys have to decide today, you know, where the pavilion's going to be, where the stage is going to be, and how this whole town center is going to be oriented. This is just all, it's still all conceptual in nature, and all the feedback is great so far. I mean, I would love to be able to turn around a concept plan based on the feedback from a couple of weeks ago, it's just, you know, too tight of a timeframe, but, you know, we'll continue to work through, you know, where things are located and what exactly, whether, whether that's a pavilion that goes there, or it's a fountain that goes there, or, you know, something else, some big art piece, I think that's, that's all kind of up in the air still. This is just kind of us working with our consultants, working with the team to kind of come up with what we think is best, but that might not be, you know, you guys and others in the community might have different, different ideas that we'll work through in the next few months.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess, I just want to truly understand and respect, is it, you're saying that we maybe aren't going to have a stage and a pavilion, or?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, like, this is just a concept, and I'm sure they'll come back to us at a later time to button up what goes in, and are we okay, you know? And, obviously, everything will come with a dollar amount, so we all have to make addition at that time. Right now, it's just
Correct.
purely concept, overall, you know? That's all I'm, that's the reason I'm not even asking questions about locations and all those things. I'm just taking, you know, as a concept right now.
Okay, so you're okay with the concept?
Yeah, that, that's
Okay, so that's what you're looking for?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. Mayor Pretam Johnson?
No, I was just going to repeat that as well. I think this is a concept, and I think you all have heard our concern about making sure that around the circle, that there's something there, and it can still be this pavilion, but that there's something there that is more than just a box.
This is special, yeah.
Yeah, that has to be special. And I will tell you, if you told me you're going to put the pavilion there, and the back wall that faced the circle was going to, was going to be a living wall with the Morrisville logo in it somehow, with some kind of foliage, I would tell you that would probably qualify for a fabulous
Yeah, certainly.
You know, way to, to put some kind of art there. So, so I think you've heard that kind of message, because even I, I brought up that concern the last time, but I think from, from a concept, concept standpoint, I would tell you we're on the right track for me.
Okay.
You know, and, and the devil, as Councilmember Garamella said, the devil is in the details. So, and that's fine at this point, I think.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what's important right now, is, is that concept, so that, you know, you're looking at that, that concept and saying, yes, we support that this is what town center could and likely will generally look like, understanding a piece could move, we could figure out how to design that pavilion, what the pavilion's use is going to be. Some of that can still occur, but we don't expect that you're going to get a dramatically different concept with, you know, just open space and nothing going on, or a completely different recommendation on a structure or something like that. We want you to be comfortable with, this is the concept that you will see fine-tuned over time and ultimately come back to you in a Development Services Agreement.
Good. Councilmember Pender?
I, I guess I'm a little confused about, I would prefer, I mean, if we have an opinion on the pavilion to say it now
Yeah.
not later, you would want that input now rather than going too far down the road, and then we give the input and it's too late. So, I mean, my input for the pavilion is, I don't like it necessarily in that location where it would block that view unless you could make it open somehow. And then, the other comment that I had was regards to that space that suggests one idea is making it a splash pad. My, I'm wondering if we could do something in that space that aligns with the healthy food hub concept. I don't know what that would be, but to me, it seems like that there were some requirements to get that grant for the healthy food hub. It seems like we should put something in that space that kind, that aligns with that concept. I don't have a specific idea of what that should be, but some, my, my thoughts are that it should be something that corresponds to the healthy food hub. Those are my comments right now.
Appreciate it, yeah. And I think we've been, we've been talking about the, the requirements for the healthy food hub, as well as the Wake County Farmers Market, and what the agreement is with the town and how that's all going to work, get worked out. I think there's a plan to meet with some of those folks, you know, as a next step, to make sure we're, we're accounting for all that, and so, you know, appreciate the feedback.
Okay, I see, Councilmember Garamella. We've each had a chance who wanted one, so, go ahead.
I'm fine.
Yeah, Councilmember Garamella?
Thanks, Avi, for this slide putting in about the parking. Do we know how many block, how many parking spaces the town is leasing from, from this agreement?
From the parking deck?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I think it's
About 80 spaces, yeah.
80 spaces?
Yeah.
And again, that, that would cover the, the spaces that were required by agreement with Wake County to provide for the library, because we will take some of their parking lot there when the construction occurs, and then the rest will be available to the public as town center visitors. And, again, there's also that, you'll remember, if you can go to the Fox Club image, Avi, you know, part of, part of what we've looked at there, you recall, is, is, you know, how are we ultimately going to program that Fox Club extension? We've looked at different angles of parking that could potentially produce more spaces, but, again, we also want to have that available as a potential, you know, closed-off corridor for larger events, for fairs, for people to set up extra vendor tents if there's a large event in the town greens, sort of that. So, that goes back to some of those details we still have to work out as to what's the best way to manage that Fox Club Drive extension.
So, my question is, like, is there, like, I see 1.5 factoring for the 345 parking spots. How can we safeguard the 80 parking lots for town use versus, like, people can come with putting two cars in there and it'll be always full? We have seen that in, what is this, Grace Park?
Yeah.
You know, where people are struggling with those parkings, and are we getting a true value to that? How do we safeguard from library point of view? Because library will come and ask questions, and from, technically, our library is 49, so it leaves, there's only 30 parking spots. So, how do we at least safeguard those spots are for town purposes?
I think part of that is working with, you know, seeing as they manage the deck, I'm, I'm off the top of my head, Eric may have other thoughts, but, you know, that could be that that parking is limited to a certain amount of time. We just then need to figure out how we're going to monitor that, and are we actually going to remove vehicles that exceed that time, sort of thing, but I think there, there are options we can consider.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ensure, you know, how we're safeguarding.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's something that you would want to have to have that conversation with, is parking enforcement of those spaces. Now, it's a deck that would be SING owned and operated, maybe you've experienced this in other parking decks that you've operated where there's been publicly accessible for retail, but you want that to turn over. You want those spaces to be available to go to the retail destinations. You don't want residences, you know, parking there all day, bottling up the deck.
Yeah, I mean, I echo what you guys said. I mean, I think if we're running into a problem with parking, I think that's a good problem to have ultimately, because that means that the retail and everything is very, is very vibrant, and a lot of people are coming there to park. You know, and I think what Brandon said, you know, I think the key would be just, in our experience in the past, is just to, especially in early stages, to just really monitor it, you know, and if it's like a, you know, if it's limited to a two-hour block, you know, that, you know, that you have, you know, us as the managers of the deck have a tow company monitoring that, you know, on a consistent basis, and actually towing cars, unfortunately, for some people, that, that, that would be the case. So, I think, but I think setting that tone early is, is, is the most important thing.
So, if you want to scroll down a little bit?
Sure.
We're trying to give a little feedback as we go. You mentioned the splash pad. I'm very interested in having that being an amenity. Right now, 14 is listed as a kind of a playground.
Yeah.
And 14 or 15 might be the splash pad. I'd lean towards having 15 be a splash pad, so that, because 15 is kind of a lost space. Anyway, we have a lot of green space on 10, so, if, I'd rather not give up play space in order to get a splash pad.
Yeah, and it's
Get both.
Further away from the street and everything.
As you go through this process. So, if you want to, you guys have already reacted really well to all our input before, so if we keep on moving through those yellow responses.
Sure.
And, everyone just essentially raise your hand if you see something you want to discuss further, as he goes through them. Thank you, Avi.
This is a kind of a zoom-in of the town green. We can flip back to that. Again, there's a question about noise from the stage, and, you know, if there's loud performances and its impact on residential, whether it be the multifamily, the townhomes proposed here, or adjacent neighborhoods, I think that's something that can be evaluated, evaluated. We can get a noise study done and see what the extent of that impact is. I think, I think there's a way they can draw rings, you know, quarter mile, half mile, mile kind of thing, and, and see what the impact is, and, I mean, that, that could be part of the final design and the placement of the stage and speakers and all that. There was a discussion on a sloped green down to the stage or the potential stage. We don't think that's any additional, real additional cost to do something like that. I, I think, if I had my one brother, just a personal thing, if you, if you look at North Hills, the slope is pretty extreme, and so, having any sort of like regular activity out, out there, I think becomes a challenge, so I think it would have to be a more of a gradual slope, but, again, that's something we can continue to explore. Any questions on this slide before I move on?
Seeing none, thank you.
And then, we had a lot of discussion last time about the Parks and Rec admin offices. I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think you had even suggested an email, potentially moving it to the retail space in the ground floor of the multifamily building. I think that's definitely an option, and it's still, to us, it kind of, you know, so long as, I think even in that case, it would have to be, you know, interactive type of programming. It couldn't just be like administrative office space, and I think that's what we've talked about extensively, and so, how that gets programmed and how it all works, I think it's to be determined, but I, I think it could move, I mean, I think we would just have to address how parking, or how restrooms are dealt with within the town green, and I think that's going to be just part of designing the town green and how that all works. Again, the phasing, there was a discussion on phasing. We think it'll work. You know, hopefully, this answer right now is, is adequate, but I think we won't really know until we really get into the weeds of the design.
Okay, not seeing any questions or comments on that slide, thank you.
I guess I said, I guess I jumped the gun on Q and A session, but.
It's probably easier to address them as we went through them.
Yeah.
So, that was really helpful. Any overall thoughts? Anyone have any level of discomfort with what we've seen and what they brought back to us at this point? This is a really important step forward, so this is really good. If you have any other questions or thoughts, you can always email town staff as they have further discussions over the next two weeks, but you guys reacted really well to all the input we gave you on the 14th, and came back with some really strong answers and
Thank you.
some alternatives, and as was mentioned, this is part of the process, and nothing here is really final-final until the Development Services Agreement, but I think we're really heading in the right direction. It's a lot of collaboration that's brought us this far. So, you guys are going to get this discussion in front of the other two who aren't here.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have some closed-session discussion, digging into some other aspects of this program later tonight. Any other final thoughts to direct to staff or Avi at this time and his team? Anything from you, sir?
Yes, sir, I think we're ready to make the transition if you are.
Okay. Excellent. Avi?
All right, thank you.
Thank you to you and your team for being here, appreciate it. So, now we're transitioning, actually, it's time for a break, and then we're going to do some admin things, then we'll be going to come, close session after that. So, why don't we take a
Can we, can we just, yeah, can we do the break right before the closed session? That would be, because we're going to have to take a break.
Okay, so, why don't we, why don't just power through a little bit more?
Yeah.
Right now? Okay, that sounds fine. So, at this time, we're at item 12, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. So, every Saturday morning from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon, the Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food, goods, and live music from small and local businesses. The town of Morrisville Temporary Disc Golf Course is scheduled to return to Cedar Fork District Park in July. Keep an eye out on our social media channels for more details on that item. And as we discussed a little bit earlier, from Will Glenn, our Communications Director, you don't have to wait until you don't have to wait until July 4th to celebrate Independence Day in Morrisville. Join the Town of Morrisville on Sunday, July 3rd from 4:00 till 9:00 p.m. for Morrisville's Family Fun Festival. And he's already gone over all the details of that. But attendance is free, but bring money for food trucks and games. As he noted, the fireworks will only be visible from Town Hall Drive. And also note, due to a number of factors, there will not be a Fourth of July pancake breakfast this year. Later that same week, Big Chi, Big Chief will play at the Second Music in the Park Event of the Summer. That'll be Friday, July 8th from 6:30 p.m. until 8:30 p.m. Big Chief is known for playing music for all ages, and their set list ranges from authentic New Orleans music to older country and rock, classic music from the 1950s, and children's songs. Bring a chair or blanket for this free concert at the Healthy Food Hub, which is located at 280 Town Hall Drive, and enjoy a meal at local food truck Baton Rouge Cuisine, which will be on site for the evening. The Morrisville Chamber has a number of great events coming up as well. On Thursday, July 14th, a C-suite conversation regarding cybersecurity at Wake Tech, and on Wednesday, July 20th, the annual first responder thank you lunch. Please visit www.morrisvillchamber.org to register or for sponsorship opportunities. At this time, we're at item 14, Council and Manager Comments. I will go first, followed by Councilmember Fender. First, I want to say thank you to the countless volunteers who helped make this past Saturday's inaugural Morrisville Cultural and Faith Alliance Youth Art Expo such a success. We have a lot of talent in the greater Morrisville region, and anytime we have a chance to empower our next generation, I'm happy to help. The Morrisville Raptors opened their cricket season this past weekend in Florida. I wish them continued success, and I'm looking forward to supporting them and the cricket in general in this upcoming holiday weekend, for which seven games are planned for Church Street Park with various team matchups, including teams from New Jersey, New York, Atlanta, and Philadelphia. Their first game, their first of their three matches is 5:30 p.m. on Friday. This time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember, Mayor Portem Johnson, please?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First of all, this morning I attended, I know we all heard Brian Hamilton at the Chamber event, but there was a great event. He did a box yard, releasing poll results on, called NC Now. It was a really fascinating conversation with David Craftree. So I'm going to find out where we can share that data, because it was pretty interesting for public officials to learn about what people were saying about North Carolina. I attended the IOT Slam at SAS. I think it's a great event for our Smart City Committee members to attend and our staff. There was some good discussion about AI and gun detection. I know there was something about in Durham today that Mayor Portem Middleton hosted on ShotSpotter. And so I think, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to address concerns in that area. And the final two days, I just want to thank BAPS for once again hosting a great Susan G. Coman Race for the Cure. They raised money for the Race for the Cure this year, and they, they had a great unity dinner last week where the DA Lauren Freeman, Scott Krittel, Kate Acosta was there, and they were addressing safety concerns with the community. And the final thing, the Goddard School, I want to thank Arden Mahajan for all he's done with the school's village. Handel's Ice Cream is a really great addition, and I had the honor on Saturday of going to the Goddard School for the festival there. I want to thank Monica and Anub Karana, who are now owners of the Goddard Schools. That's all I've got. Have a great Fourth, everybody.
Mayor Portem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Caramella?
So I, I just have one comment. I just want to extend my sympathies to Congressman David Price on the loss of his wife Lisa to pancreatic cancer. I am deeply saddened, obviously, to hear of the loss of Lisa, who is an accomplished and distinguished person in her own right and a true public servant here in the community. So I just want to say to Congressman Price, who's been a significant friend to the Morrisville community and has been responsible for a great deal of funding and significant projects here in our community, I just want to say to him that I wish him peace and comfort in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Caramella?
Yeah, I call a same gentleman, you know, as I said, and no comments from him.
Okay. Happy Fourth of July to everyone coming up. Town Manager Page, anything from staff?
Yes, sir. I'll have Ash Genie to sort of head to the podium for a comment about budget, but while she's doing that, I would like to propose that council consider canceling our scheduled August 20th work session. I've been, I'm sorry, August 16th, because you have a work session now scheduled for August 20th. Thank you, Brandon. We're working on the rolling calendar, and currently, our September meetings are very light, and, and we have capacity to schedule some of those work items and presentations during a regular meeting that then would avoid you going to four meetings over the course of the two weeks, which has been a challenge for us. So it's manageable from a workload perspective if council would want to consider canceling that August 16th work session.
Does anyone have any issue with deleting that from our schedule? Do we need to do a motion on that?
Yes, sir. It's part of your formal calendar, so, and, and then we can
And that will make it easier for them to work on their working, rolling calendar going forward. I'd entertain a motion to remove the August 16th work session from our regular calendar.
Second.
I'll, I'll, you can make the motion.
I'll give a resolution motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, 5-0, so that can be removed from our calendar. Thank you. Passing it to Genie Hooks.
Hello, everyone. You thought you were done with beach on June 14th, but you're not. So two points just to touch base with you. We had a really successful year with our budget development. We had some new things, both at the council level and at the staff level, and how we did our process, this front-loaded process, more input as we, as we used it to guide our development and recommendation about budget. It's always really good at this point in time to do some reflection. So, so that's where we're headed with staff, and I just wanted to share that with you. So both internally with our staff and, and with council, we're going to do some, some feedback mechanisms, some simple tools with council, very similar to your brainstorming exercise, if you recall, where we can collect some input, what did we do well? What did we learn? What should we change? And, and that will help really inform us, to guide us as we develop the budget calendar that sort of plans our entire year, our entire next year, for developing that next round of budget and capital investment planning. So we just want to do our due diligence and, and really put some good thought to that, both at the council level and at staff, and staff will guide through some facilitated conversations later once we collect the input. So I just wanted to touch on that. The other thing, I just want to share with you, is staff internally has already initialized their internal process of, of working through the CIP. Remember, this year is going to be a major update, and I, I shared with you during the budget process, there's this long timeline. We need to do some internal work first, and that's what staff will be working on this quarter. And then come the second quarter, we'll start engaging with council and sharing information with you. But I just wanted to touch base with you to let you know, things are in the works. Okay? Thank you.
Town has a strategic plan. We're getting lots of feedback loops. This is really great stuff. This is a way to continue our continuous improvement, so thank you both for that. Anything else for the good of the order before we move towards closed session? Okay. So we have two closed sessions this evening to discuss matters relating to economic development and attorney-client privilege. As we had no plans to conduct any additional public business after the closed sessions at this time, I would like to say thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor, council, I move pursuant to North Carolina Statute 143.31811A4 and A3 that we move, we move into closed session to discuss economic development matter and the matter of attorney-client privilege.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We are now in closed session.